Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Tuesday, March 15th, Board of Education Virtual Regular Business Meeting and the Second Budget Workshop. Can we have a motion, please, to move into executive session?
So moved.
Maria, second by Janice, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We will be back shortly. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our resumed Board of Education Virtual Board Workshop and Business Meeting this March 15th. Would everyone join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now may we have a motion, please, to move out of executive session. Linda, second by Janice, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. That's... Wait a second. Where'd Mike go? Oh, he's right there. Okay, gotcha. Okay. I apologize. This evening, we have a couple items of business before we move into the Second Budget Workshop. And the first item is the second reading of the 2022-2023 school calendar. Brian will take care of for us.
Yep. Nothing has changed since the last time. We had a couple of questions that I think we've answered, hopefully, now. Does anybody have any other questions? In regards to the calendar? And I think we're ready to have a vote.
Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion, please, to adopt the 2022-2023 school calendar? Maria, second by Janice, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And our second item of business is a resolution to approve the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. We have an employment agreement and a resolution before us, whereas the Board of Education has determined that Erin Land possesses the necessary qualifications to serve as the Webster Central School District's Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and whereas Ms. Land has resigned her position as Director of Elementary Education while serving as Inter- Assistant Superintendent for Instruction for the district, and whereas the Board of Education wishes to appoint Ms. Land as Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. And then the resolution continues. But it would be our honor, I'd like to ask for a resolution, a motion to pass the resolution to appoint Erin Land. Linda, second by Janice, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Welcome, Erin.
Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you. I'm very excited. Thank you.
So are we. We couldn't think of a better teammate. You have been an amazing interim Assistant Superintendent, but all the, your entire resume speaks for itself. It's really about the person that you are and the way that you care about kids and care about people and care about our staff. So, so excited to have you on board officially.
Well deserved, Erin.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Brian invited and included Janice and I to be part of that interview process that was just wonderful, just wonderful. And the things that Brian mentioned, of your characteristics, that always child-centered and positive and optimistic and great vision for our district. And we're excited, we're really excited for where we can go, so. Thank you for that, everyone. And now moving on to Budget Workshop Part Two, Mr. Freeman.
Excellent. Take it away from here.
Oh, I apologize. We have opening remarks from Vice President Richardson before this Second Budget Workshop.
All right. Welcome to the Second Budget Workshop for the 2022-2023 school year. Our seven-member board prides itself on developing strong goals and balancing a budget that reflects these goals. The goals help the district measure its success in relation to meeting community and state standards. The goals and community input from our recent thought exchange will help guide the process and prioritize needs. Today will be an opportunity to further our vision, to increase academic programs and achievement, as well as improve climate and culture. Our focus today centers around the classroom and the areas of education that directly relate to student learning and a variety of educational and extracurricular opportunities. The Board is dedicated to the educational and social-emotional well-being of our students and staff. We are looking forward to hearing about the many areas of the most recent thought exchange brought to life in the 2223 budget. These areas include early interventions, smaller class sizes, increased arts offering, and community education. Additional focus areas also include instructional technology, library and pupil services, athletics, and co-curricular programs. Brian Freeman, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, will walk us through the presentation and offer the Board of Education a chance to ask questions. So take it away, Brian.
All right. Thank you. Can you share the screen? And how is that? Everybody good? Font size, everything?
Perfect.
First question I always ask. All righty. So let's hop right into our agenda. Like Mrs. Richardson described, this is going to be the, really, the student-centered portion of the budget, all the instructional areas that we're going to be hitting this evening and go through. There's a lot here, so please, please, please stop and ask questions. This really was a team effort, putting a lot of this together. So if there's something in the chat box or something, you know, Erin, Brian, Dave, and Colleen, not sure if she can answer while driving, but I'm sure she'll do her best without running off the road. But anything that pops up, you know, throw it in the chat box or, you know, please, please stop me. All right. So first, it's kind of like this ongoing theme for this presentation. It's kind of rewind it back to the summertime. Because last budget year, when we were working through everything, everything was still in quite upheaval with state finances, federal stimulus is coming through, what was going to happen. And so the budget we put together for this current year, 2122, you know, didn't have a lot of the federal stimulus thoughts worked into it because that all came out really after July with all the applications and deadlines and the rules. So it didn't really get moving on what we could do with the stimulus until this budget year was already underway. And now that we kind of have a better sense and we finally got approval on some of these federal programs, six months later, how could we, you know, weave those identified items into our operating budget? How do we plan for that fiscal cliff? So we have some of this great stuff, and how do we keep it in there without, you know, it going away when that federal funding rings out? Really, the 2223 budget is the first budget where we can plan for that. So I just, that's kind of like the ongoing theme as we're working through some of these topics and areas. The other thing we wove throughout this is really the thought exchange comments and how we responded to them as part of all these departments. So you'll see that as well in many of the slides. So first up is our curriculum budget that we start off with. And there were some thought exchanges, had a chance to read those. There was many thought exchanges, you know, we received so many. I just pulled usually the top ones off the search bar and wove those in there. So a lot about, this is our professional development budget, in essence, when you really distill it on down. So there was multiple thoughts about inclusion training, more professional development opportunities, training for staff. So how did we build this budget and respond to it? So first up, as part of this curriculum budget, there used to be an old position in here for the Deputy Superintendent. And that person has taken a different position within the district. So their salary has gone away into a different code. And we have a new position. The add here is the Director of Family Engagement and Inclusivity. But you'll see when we look at the numbers, why are the, you know, you added a position, why are the salaries still lower? Because, you know, we lost a Deputy Superintendent, added a Director. Well, I wouldn't say we lost, we shifted it to a different part of the budget. And so you'll see a little bit of savings, but that's really the delta difference between the two. It is a new position into the budget. So we wanted to point that out. Other things we've done here, BOSI's costs, you will see when we look at the numbers are up. We threw some additional funding here for curriculum training through BOSI's programs. They run a multitude of our professional developments, even the ones we run in-house with a lot of our own staff. We could put that through BOSI's, run those costs through there because then we get the BOSI's aid for those as well. So higher than previous budget year increases. We are expecting more participation this upcoming year, a lot more participation as many programs have been on hold. Many things haven't run, some things have been virtually. We're expecting more in-person things. So usually, you know, with cost of travel and things like that, we'll see expenses go up. So those are kind of our curriculum updates for next year. When you look at those salaries, you see there's some secretarial support that's gone up, supplies, contractuals, professional development, some of those mandated things. They've all stayed relatively flat over the last three years. You see the BOSI services the last two years where things have been on hold. We haven't had any increases there. But we're expecting probably a little bit over an eight percent increase with some additional offerings and people jumping at some additional work. Overall, though, this budget is really, you know, three tenths of a percent there. Excuse me, sorry. Just a little bit more than a quarter of one percent and a small increase of $8,406 over last year. Questions on curriculum, what we're doing?
Ryan, I just sent you through a chat. So back on the previous slide, what are the responsibilities going to be for the Director of Family Engagement and Inclusivity?
I will happily pass that one over to Mr. Neenan, who has the job description.
Absolutely. That is, I think it's been a much-needed position in our district. I know it's something that we have been discussing as a board right from last year at this time, actually. But last year, we did the work of our equity and inclusivity through BOSI's, the BOSI's co-ser, and now it is time to propose a position that we have right here in our district.
Yeah, and so some of that was really for the benefit of just anyone who's watching, just to help assist with what we're proposing there. Okay.
Yeah, it's exciting. I'm excited. It's great. I think it's, it'll be a great position.
And thanks, I just found where the chat box, where the chat box pops up. I was looking all over my main screen, but it's over the far right-hand corner. So it's a good early test. All right. So moving on, instructional budget. Really, the meat and potatoes of our entire program. And we're going to talk about what the focus is. There, I could have done 20 slides, I think, alone, just on thought exchange, that focused on instructional programming. We'll start with really our why and what's the motivation that we're having in the next slides. And it's really trying to get kids on this chart where their motivation and excitement for school correlates with that academic success and putting together a program where these two are continuously intersecting. So I'm a math guy, I like graphs. So I wanted to kind of show this correlation of, you know, visually why are some of the things we're doing? It's trying to get those kids motivated and happy and excited about school again. And, you know, when that happens, reaching that academic success. So first thought exchange comments was really small class size. And I would like to point out, it wasn't just elementary, but we're going to focus elementary first. The smaller class sizes came through time and time and again. You know, tremendous amount of comments. So I think that's the best place for us to start. And so let's take a look, a little bit of where we are on the elementary sides. What can we do and where are we now? These numbers exclude UPK. It's really just K5, average class size, district-wide right now. At kindergarten level, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and then the overall average. You see, there's, you know, a little bit of a bubble there at fourth grade across the district. But as a reminder, you know, we did make conservative effort as part of this budget, and I have a note on this later, to really hone in in 2122 with the kindergarten class sizes, keeping those below 20.
Ryan, just on the current slide here, are you saying that these are the current class sizes?
Current district-wide averages for kindergarten and that first.
Okay. And one of the things we've talked about, and it looks like you're going to get into it, so I'll let you.
No, go ahead.
Is how, no, it's your next slide, is how that changes between schools and why. Yeah.
Correct. Yep. Perfect leading. So, you know, everything's unique by building. So this, this data is something we shared with all of our principals and with senior leadership team because, you know, I live in this world with, you know, back and forth with facilities planning, but that's something a lot, you know, the admin deals with on a day-to-day basis. What rooms look like and what the state views our rooms as. So we try to start from the global perspective, of all the seven elementaries, how many total rooms are in each one and start from there. But then you look, the state only counts two less than what the total rooms are. And the reason for that is art and music rooms don't count as official, you know, you first say classrooms. When we do a student pupil count, those two classrooms get, don't count to the overall amount of classrooms because they figure everybody's got to have an art, everybody's got to have a music room, and then you can look at your class sizes after that. And then so next column is really how many UPK classrooms we got across, elementary, what space that has taken up, special education classrooms, what's taken up. And then, so what's available for K5 after that? So we've gone, you know, down to 174 classes. Right now, we're running 161 sections. There are classrooms available. If you look, every building's unique, DeWitt has no room. So they're kind of locked at what their class sizes is. Some schools have three rooms or one or two, but many of those are used for support services. So for instance, in one of, in a couple of the buildings, one class is an OTPT room to help support students that get those services. Where would that go? You know, some are used for their math teaching assistance to help support students if they ever do pull-out services or push, you know, versus push-in. Some are utilized for mental health. They're sectioned off and created so many mental health offices. Some are used for CT support for, once again, pull-out, push-in. So, you know, I looked at it as a mathematical formula. Erin and I spent month of January working with principals to say, okay, here's the mathematical formula we look at for classroom size. We show you have these extras. Let's have that conversation. Do you really have extras? And in a couple places, there are, and a couple places, they're being used for, you know, legitimate purposes. We don't want to stick everybody in an open closet. That's not great. That's not conducive. So the, any open classroom had been utilized. So that's the kind of, you know, building breakdown now of what's the average class size per building based on those sections we have right now.
And so, Brian, that, those classrooms, so like actually, you know, it says 23, but that's obviously looking at K, you know, pre-K through kindergarten. It's not like per grade, you know, because what, what some people will get confused on is they'll look at this and they'll say, well, I know in fourth grade, the averages, right? You know, they've got this many kids in there. And so just to be clear about what those, those average size, sizes mean, and that, you know, part of what goes into this is that the district, we don't control, right, who lives where and how many kids are going to be needed to be in those grades. So you may see one school, like one elementary school that doesn't have as many fourth graders as, say, Clem North. And so you're going to see higher classroom sizes in some of those buildings and it's to keep those kids in those catchments so that they're still going to their home school, but they may have a higher class size than people who are living in Plank South for that particular grade and that particular year.
Right. And I tried to show you the data in two ways. One, the district-wide by grade, and then showing you the uniqueness of each building.
Yeah.
And what happens there. You know, Schlegel, you, so take that as example because it's at the top. It has the smallest overall population of all the elementary schools, but it has the highest class size tied with Clem North overall K5 because we have utilized several of their classrooms for special education. They have two UPK. So, you know, another perfect segue into a slide later of what we've done. So, you know, it shows that, yep, we're down. Here's the smallest population school, but they actually have one of the larger class sizes because they are one of the bubble schools on that fourth grade that has a higher, a higher fourth grade that brings the district-wide average up. So just wanted to show it both ways, per building and district-wide.
Now, Brian, when we first started looking at this, one of the questions I asked was, why can't we just build a temporary classroom to accommodate some extra space? And I believe you explained how there were some legalities against doing those movable classrooms at this point?
Yeah. The temporary classrooms are are as difficult as building something brand-new and getting the approval for. You know, they're not, they're not great spaces either. You know, it would be... Yeah, I mean, that's probably the best response I have for it. They're not great.
But I get this from me saying, well, why don't we just get a temporary, like, classroom trailer to reduce class sizes for a while and...
Yeah, it's, it's really just, you know, a glorified trailer.
Right. There's no state aid on that either, correct, on those temporary classrooms?
Correct. Unless there was some kind of emergency around it.
Okay. And they're very particular about what can be called a classroom, correct, Brian?
Yeah.
I was thinking Brian Neenan. Yeah, like it has to have like a certain type of roof on it. It has to be a particular type of facility to be considered a classroom. People call it that. Okay.
That's right.
Plus, they're removed from the actual, the rest of the building because they're isolated, right? They're not, you can't attach them, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah.
Correct me if I'm, I was just going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the time you see those temporary classroom views in southern states where the weather is a little bit different as well, moving in and out from there to the gymnasium on a daily basis or the art room where they, you know, some of the specials that they would have to go to.
All right. So when we look at this on the class size, what are we targeting? So K2 class size at 20 or below, right now, we're estimating about 2.0 FTE to make that happen as part of this budget. And just, you know, as I stated earlier, we did add 3.0 this year to lower those K-numbers. Those transition and carry with it, we're looking to keep kind of that 20 or below, about 2.0 based on estimates right now. We're estimating another 2.0 to get class sizes at 22 or below, 3.5, that's our target. So we think that will help bring those numbers down utilizing about 2.0 FTE.
Hey, Brian, is the FTE, are you looking at a teacher, like a full-time new teacher or someone actually in the classroom? Okay, not just like an aide in the classroom to help?
Correct. Yep. These are new sections with new teachers that we're adding. So Erin and I, ad nauseam, probably every day, look, you know, pull up our registration tab and look, and we're constantly monitoring this. Here's our two wild cards right now. Is really kindergarten registration. That's why I talk in estimation right now because what's going to happen over the summer? You know, there's been years when we've broken sections in August because I remember, I think it was about three years ago, DeWitt had this influx of 17 students into kindergarten. So we, in August, ended up breaking a section. So there's always that kindergarten registration feels like it becomes somewhat last-minute recently. I don't think that's going to change much. In the homeschool, you know, homeschool numbers jumped. And now with, you see in the relaxation on some of the COVID's rules and requirements, will students come back and will that create pockets in different places that we'll have to look to do on the class size? So we're constantly looking at that. Right now, we have conservatively estimated, you know, into the budget, into the instructional budget, 4.0 FTE to look and cover those things on the elementary side and, you know, try to work within the space availability too. So Erin, is there anything you wanted to add to that? You know, since we do this kind of hand-in-hand?
Yeah, I was just going to answer. Mike has a question in the chat about how do you spread 2.0 FTE across multiple schools? So, you know, one of the things we do is look at where's the greatest need? Where's the, that impact's going to be the greatest? So in the conversations with the principals and in doing the math with Brian, we prioritized two spots for sure that could break sections, and it made sense to do that. So that's sort of how we look at all of the classes across all of the buildings.
Can you tell us where you're looking to do that or is that something you want to keep private right now?
Great question.
It's okay either way. I was just like, if you can share, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, let me see if I can get my hands on it quick. I'll come back to you.
Whatever it is, it's always preliminary because we know that between now and August, things fluctuate and change. And sometimes we've had to in the past, rob Peter to pay Paul and that kind of thing too. So, and a lot of this is conversations with the principals that hasn't necessarily been shared with the district yet.
That's why I was like, if you can't share it, that's okay. You haven't had those conversations yet. I totally understand. And then what about, so one of the other ways that you can break down class sizes, and I know, you know, is to add more people into the classroom to help break it down into, add more aides at the classroom level to try to help them break those down into smaller groups inside of the classroom when you can't break up. Have you guys thought about that or?
We have, for sure. Yeah.
Go ahead, Erin.
We have, for sure. One of the things that we're up against is a smaller pipeline of folks that want to do paraprofessional work. And so we are actively recruiting people to fill open positions that we have. So we're trying to be thoughtful about how do we support the kids in the best way we can? So is it an FTE classroom teacher? Is it a different kind of teacher? Or is it a paraprofessional? And if we sort of look at it as an "and" instead of an "or", I think we're going to provide the best education we can for kids. So we're definitely not leaving any of those things out.
All right. Thank you, Erin.
It's also easier to hire an elementary certified teacher right now than it is to find a teaching assistant. With, you know, the professional certified positions are easier to fill than the support staff ones, for sure.
And Brian, you're probably anticipating that if there is some kind of vaccine mandate that's going to, that will affect attendance, you know, as well, or how many kids are in school?
Yeah. Yes. I, you know, I can't imagine that's going to happen, but that, from a non-scientific straw poll, I would imagine that would impact our enrollment very much. I would imagine it would impact everybody in New York State's enrollment very much. Not just us. I don't think, yeah, everybody would.
Jenna, we aren't hearing that chatter right now. So we're hoping that that's not necessarily where it's going, but we'll continue to monitor.
I appreciate the, the looking into the class size and how much work you guys have done to analyze that. I appreciate the education that you gave me on it as well so that I could understand it better because I had no idea, you know, all the different aspects that you have to take into consideration when you're looking at class size and different approaches to address it. And I appreciate that you listened to the community, that that was a concern from them, and you thoughtfully put that in. And and you thoughtfully put that into your budget to address.
Thanks. Yeah, and coming off the hybrid model um last year at the elementary, I don't think. You know, I'll say it again, our process uh compared to other districts was was so much better. Um, you know, I know I'm a hometown Webster guy, but um, you know, when you hear friends talk from other districts and. And their setup, our half-day model and with those smaller sections. Was ten times more bang for your buck with kids than, you know, the two days, one virtual, two days, half in, half in. I, you know, when you look at contact time. So I think our community really, it showed in the thought exchange, but on the elementary side with the class size coming off of that. Uh, just, you know, to keep that discussion going, you know, if we wanted to look at any lower reductions, I think we'd have to have some additional conversations. Um, you know, in about four, four weeks from now, a year ago, I was in stunned silence. Uh, putting, uh, reading a book with Jack while checking my Twitter feed to realize, you know, our U P K funding went up by over a million dollars. Never in a million years would expect that, uh, didn't want to not waste it. But in essence, I think we've created another school with U P K. And is that, what's the long-term look there? Um, you know, do we have to do something special or different um for U P K? Uh, if that funding stream is going to stay or if they're even going to expand it even more. Um, you know, we have about two hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and eighty-five students. Um, you know, that's a, that's a small building. Do we, we look at that differently? Or special education classrooms? Do we have to look at that a little differently as well? That would free up some of that traditional class space where we could, you know, maybe attack and go after some additional uh class size things. Maybe, you know, you want to do eighteen students at kindergarten. We're a little constrained right now. These are conversations we have to have. And, you know, I always want to point out, yes, enrollment is down. We can't dispute that. The numbers don't lie on that. But things we've done is, you know, brought back that owl program, you know, that's taken uh five classrooms from Schlegel Road. Um, out of their general population for utilizing for, you know, traditional uh K five classrooms. We've used space to kind of make a better program, save a few dollars, you know, even though uh that's, you know, on my end. But it's a better program than um the students were at. And we did naturally lower some class sizes where we could. So just when it comes to class size, it's it oft, it opens up into a much larger, uh, larger than a budget conversation.
Hey, Brian, quick question. Um, my little, my youngest guy, he's over at, he's over at Doodle Bugs. And he was going to go into the Webster-supported U P K program next year. Um, are we saving anything by pulling our program back out of of Doodle Bugs or how is that impacting the U P K program?
Um, so off the top of my head, Doodle Bugs did not respond to their R R F P.
Okay.
That we did. Um, we had done one years ago for the private. And with the new invigoration of the money, we wanted to do another one. So Heather and I worked on that. And they, they just didn't, whether it was they dropped the ball, they didn't respond to it. And because they didn't respond to it, we put a program there.
Okay, and just because I know, I know, actually know quite a few Webster parents who are Doodle Bug attendees. So just so people may not be aware that Webster will no longer be directly quote, you know, connected to Doodle Bugs. So that might be helping people make a choice, so.
And Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those spots went out to everybody in the lottery that it wasn't there.
I believe that's correct. We do will have a couple of other off-site locations for U P K, which is exciting for us. Um, but that lottery is not till the end of the week.
Looking forward to those numbers, Erin.
Alright, no problem. Love the question. So next up, you know, on the thought exchange was. We kind of grouped together all these comments around instruction, education, learning, uh, this huge batch of. Um, you know, that really was focused on academics and learning. And so you can see, I picked three about early intervention. R T I supports, supporting art music library, E E, uh, you know, the whole gamut of. Of bringing that, those things uh into the budget. Um, so with that said, the first thing we're going to look at is elementary. We're gonna go to elementary and then uh do secondary uh when it comes to these, these items. So what does this budget, what's in our numbers that is addressed in? Here comes our theme too of starting to plan. These are in our federal dollars, so we're gonna do partially in our budget, partially in federal dollars. As part of that plan. So first up is R T I services um to support, and these are teaching positions. Um, to increase support for learning gaps in math, English language, arts right now uh at the elementary level. Um, additional staff for academic achievement to do some of the things. Uh, the New York State standards that, you know, were touched on, that parents in the community would like to see. But quite often, uh, it's overwhelming for our traditional K five teachers. They, you can't get to a lot of this stuff. They need the support there. Um, so like computer science standards, digital fluency, keyboarding. Um, there's a tremendous amount of uh curriculum there, uh, health standards, world languages. Um, additional small group instruction, it could be, you know, science, social studies, different things, um, really. Uh, Erin's done a nice job uh working through those with with um the instructional staff. To come up with some ideas that could really, um, you know, bring that motivation and that. Uh, excitement into the elementary through this, uh, which then invigorates the the academic piece on our, at our chart. Um, and partially funded through this, the federal stimulus and then partially here, it's a budgetary increase. But it's, you know, it's projected out. We're not doing it all as part of this budget. We got part of it. And then we'll, we'll keep doing that um as necessary. And then um, when I started, I think, I believe, uh, Brian, correct me. We had two instructional specialists back uh in fourteen fifteen that worked amongst the elementary buildings. And slowly, um, we've grown to having one for each elementary building. And we've done that, uh, a couple of minutes, the budget over the years. Um, but uh, three of them were partially grant-funded um through our title grants. Next year, um, they will all be funded and permanently in our budget and no longer be grant-funded. Um, so those are kind of set stone and each uh building will have that as as part of our base uh budget from year to year.
That's correct, Brian. Yep.
Yep. Questions on that? I think we got something in the chat box.
It's me.
Uh, target approaches? Targeted F T E uh versus going from twenty-two to twenty. Is that?
Uh, yeah, let me tell you what I'm thinking. If you just kind of peanut butter spread, go from twenty-two to twenty across the board. Are we missing out on the students that may need extra help? And just going from twenty-two to twenty, does that really help those students or are we better off targeting those students? Um, with extra help versus, you know, keeping the class, keeping the classroom at twenty-two versus twenty?
Um, so I could start with, we're, it's targeted based on where the the bubbles are. As far as overall um class size. So, you know, if there's three sections and they're at, you know, sixty-eight students. But there's one will, you know, if they're over that threshold or something like that, we'll target an F T E there um to bring it down. Um, but as far as, you know. Adding extra staff um and support, this is kind of what this R T I model is looking to do. Um, it would be, we're doing the class size, get the class sizes down and then in addition. And this R T I to target those areas where there are, you know, we know this. Uh, a student came from preschool that had perhaps some learning gaps or a student, you know, moved from out of district. There was, you know, you know, from a remote program in a state, six states over, you know. Those type of decisions where this is where that R T I will help um close some of those gaps district wide. Does that make sense?
It does, right? I'm just looking at trying to lift everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's exactly, that's what we are saying. The most important word is and right now. And uh.
Very much.
You know, because for some kids it is, they need extra support. For other kids, it's about raising that it's excitement and having an opportunity to look at the. Like Brian mentioned, the the computer science standards or the, or the world language and exploration and world languages or something to that effect. That might really encourage a lot of kids to get excited about coming to school. So you've increased social emotional learning and what are, you know, ex- excitement for for the learning process itself. So everything is hopefully is what we're trying to do is is do all pockets and not just focus on one area or another.
So Brian, um, both Brian's, um, uh, so I I I see here that we're focusing on elementary. And what I'm concerned about is those learning gaps for kids that are heading into college, that are leaving high school. And they need to be prepared uh to be able, you know, to get into college and handle college and process all of that. So is there part of the budget that is going to be assisting with that level two and not just this focus on elementary?
Yep, up, slide seventeen eighteen.
Good transition.
You and I planned this.
You just keep tossing those softballs up, I'll keep them out of the park. Uh, so what does this mean for secondary though? We focused, we did elementary secondary. There is definitely some uh literacy and R T I support at the middle school level um that we've seen. Um, that middle schools have asked for, so we're gonna deliver on that as part of this budget. Um, next, couple of things, um, how I mentioned a little bit about, we focus class size. The elementary is a little bit numerical. Um, it it's a little formulaic. Here's the enrollment, here's the sections. High school, it's a little bit more, class size is a little bit nuanced, uh, because it's all based on what kids register to take. Um, you know, and it's not uniform, like in ninth, here's ninth grade English, here's how many kids I got, divided by how many sections. Here's your class size. It's a, it's a little bit more complex because of the requirements, who's taking what here. Uh, you know, what sequence, what electives everybody wants. So when it comes to class size at elementary, it's kind of wrapped up into this discussion on thought it with. Uh, learning and the academic nature. So right now, we're looking increased for high school course offerings that are spaced amongst all the departments. So really the electives, you know, that thing that motivates people, makes them want to come to school. Um, things that we haven't run before, really, so when we talk class size, maybe in years past. We didn't run a section unless it had fifteen students in it. So now we're working with the admin and the schedulers. Let's, let's, what is the impact right now of running that section? Maybe ten is the threshold. Uh, so we could run capstone classes. We don't have to. You know, alright, if the kid, if a student wants to take this class, we'll run it at Trader, so everybody at Thomas has to travel. Now maybe that knocks out another course for the student from Thomas and vice versa. So now if you keep as many kids in their home buildings, they could take more classes. So we did see uh increase in uh student uh course offerings and uh what they want to take. So lower class size that way by running a course, but also making sure those offerings are there. The student is committed to kind of a thread that when they get to their senior year, maybe five kids want to take something, six kids. Um, we, we run that course for those students because they've put the work in out there. Uh, this one's a little bit more abstract because, you know, it's all based on the timing of course offerings. So we've done a first blush. Uh, you know, we have a place holder for F T E right now, but we're looking to finalize those numbers with the secondary staff in the coming weeks.
I also want to add that we have through the stimulus funds allocated um money towards learning recovery. And that has been something that we have been doing a lot with our secondary schools. That's really where the learning recovery money is going is for our middle and our high school kids as well. And we will do more of that this year. The last two years, it has grown and last summer it was hugely successful. Thanks to our amazing staff that had, that made that happen. Um, but it's exciting because we'll have more of that again coming this, this summer.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian.
So Brian, one question. Have our offerings diminished because of COVID and things that were offered remote, will they be live again? Like what's the adjustment because of relative to the impact of the pandemic?
I think first of all, we saw more kids signing up for stuff this year in our first blush, more so than in the previous two years. Um, you know, we saw more kids filling holes uh in schedule versus, you know. I won't say withdrawing.
Our elective numbers are way up.
Electives, you know, we saw a reduction, our A P numbers um during the pandemic, we saw. Uh, I think there was a concern, uh, you know, of of time and commitment and stretching yourself. Um, so we're seeing, seeing some of those numbers bounce back too, uh, based on our first blush of uh student requests.
So Brian, A P enrollment was down and now you're seeing it come back up?
So all the, yeah, all the elective area courses and some, and some of the A Ps on the first blush were back up.
And Shannon, the true number and the true indicator with that will come in September. Because again, these are requests, so we always have to be cautious on making sure that we watch that. But right now, the trend is is going up for those. But then once the seat, everyone's in their seats in September, then we take another look. And that's really the comparison that we do from year to year for those numbers.
Good news.
So some things that kind of, you know, I was excited to add because I'm always the bearer of that, nope, can't get this. And uh, for, for people here, you know, I'm sorry this one got left out. But one thing that, um, some smaller items uh on the instruction size, instructional side increasing. Uh, Michael Roller has always asked for a centralized art supply program. Um, and so we were able to deliver that this year as part of this budget. Uh, a centralized cultural arts program, we've been working towards that as well. Uh, the buildings do some things on their own, but it will last a couple of years. Uh, we've centralized, every elementary kid goes to the Challenger Experience at fifth grade across the district, looking to do more stuff with that, with the directors. Uh, and then Shannon, to your point, a hundred thousand dollars additional has been added for after-school programs. Both secondary and elementary into a building to help with that uh learning recovery. Um, you know, uh, skill building as well. Um, and so those are just some things I wanted to point off. Um, as well that are kind of for all levels that we'll see, um, that we're able to do as part of this budget as well.
I'm really glad to see that, Brian. Decentralizing, I think, is really important for everyone to have that one Webster experience as we talk about that. And and so I'm really happy to see that. Um, so thank you.
Yeah, it it's been exciting to get, um, you know. This, it it's sometimes difficult to wrangle eleven different um buildings or four or seven into like, well. You know, I was a science person and I really loved this experience. Well, I was, I came from a social studies kind of curriculum background and I always, I want to do this. So, you know, it's trying to, you know, get the arms around that and say, let's, alright, we did a science one, let's see what we could do next in a different area.
Yeah, and we were almost in danger of losing the Challenger field trip because it went back and forth between funding for P T S A versus the school. And there were, and it really is an amazing experience. So I'm so happy that we can bring that to all of our students.
Yeah, and they finally found a permanent home, which has helped stabilize it uh over at the Kodak Theater. Uh, then the building budgets, just want to touch on that because that's part of the instructional. We do a formula for all the buildings to make it as fair and even as possible. Uh, across elementary, middle school, high school at different rates. Uh, they get additional multipliers if they have uh English uh second language program. Uh, if the free and reduced lunch rates are higher than the district average, if there are special classes, they get, uh, there's multipliers in some formula for that. So a few buildings actually saw increases in their free and reduced uh lunch rates. Uh, so they got a little bit more funding, um, but overall, our buildings were funded a little bit less uh than nineteen twenty due to some enrollment decreases. And really, what did the buildings allocate their funds towards? Cultural arts enrichment, equipment, uh, supplies, textbooks, library materials and books. Um, and you'll see when we take a look at the numbers, um, where those, every year it changes. Uh, what kind of the buildings are looking to fund is slightly different. Just a little visual of, you know, the five-year look back, obviously the secondary buildings have larger and it works its way down. Then you can always tell who has enrollment changes by um where their funding's at to in the bar graph. So when we look at the numbers, uh, this for the instructional budget, you see the salaries going up, uh, you know, five percent, that's the new positions coming in. Plus raises for the staff that are in these areas. Um, you see the sub costs, we do, we, you know, we've approved substitute increases, so um, it sub increases there. Uh, the one thing you might be curious as well, non-instructional salaries, why, why is that only up less than, you know, barely uh half a percent? Um, a lot of change in that group, even though minimum wage pushes uh those groups. Um, we, we've had some retirements uh in our administrative support roles, our secretarial roles, we've had uh changes there, so that salary breakage is taken into account there. Um, so smaller than normal increase. And then really the next lines, equipment, supplies, um, tuition is separate, but then enrichment, cultural arts, textbooks and contractuals, that's where the principals have the say of where they want to allocate it. So some years, maybe there's a run on, I really want to redesign a couple classrooms, get some new furniture, so you might see equipment spike and supplies come down. Or um this year, which was probably quite unusual, but I think I know why. Um, why is there a textbook increase this year? Um, a lot of the principals have allocated their building budget towards buying some uh uh reading serieses, so they've allocated to textbooks and spent less in other areas. So you see that this is where that variation really comes into play uh to a bunch of different areas. Um, and where you see contractuals go down. Tuition, um, that is unique, that is our, uh, what we pay to charter schools. Um, projecting that to be flat, um, that comes out of our instructional budget, we pay the tuition uh for students that live in Webster and enroll in charter schools. Um, so that's part of our instructional budget. Overall, four point eight percent increase. Um, on the BOSI side, you see that's going up, uh, really, um, two and a half percent. That's our student management software. Um, and some of the base costs of our uh cultural arts uh programs are run through BOSIs, so we saw it increase there as well. So overall, those are our numbers that equate to all the slides we just went over. Questions on anything else or anything? You know, maybe that sticks out that I didn't cover. All right. So next up then is our special education budget. Um, it's about ten percent of the overall. And we did get some thought exchange comments on special education, you know, around, um, you know, early intervention, special education classrooms, uh, and not having uh needs met and some more RTI services to special education students. Uh, so take a look uh of what uh the special education budget changes are. Uh, for next year is a three point O add for program continuum, K twelve. Um, so some extra support there, sort of uh CTE and special classes. Uh, as part of the expansion of the OWL program at the secondary level, uh, as the elementary students are moving up. See the uh one additional FTE at middle, the one at high school, so a total of five point O FTE um going into the special education budget. And then the next two largest parts of the special education budget are our BOSIs placements, kids that, um, and students that go to either Monroe one, Monroe two, uh, we do have students that go to Wayne Finger Lakes for programs, uh specialized programs there as well. Uh, those are flat, uh, our enrollment there uh has been stable. Um, and you know, one of the things BOSIs is having just a harder time, it's got harder finding paraprofessional support, so they've kind of reimagined a lot of their programs, which has helped keep tuition costs pretty stable for districts. Um, uh, because you know, you can't add a one-to-one aid uh into a student's IEP at BOSIs if you can't find a one-to-one aid. Um, so they've kind of reconfigured, which um has helped with keep costs flat. And so our enrollment stayed relatively stable there and uh same thing with the private placements enrollment uh is stable as well for programs like Norman Howard, Hillside, Crestwood, those are what we call the private placement. Uh, where we pay tuition directly to those groups, um, for going, for those students going uh to one of those providers. An example would be Helper on Bay Road, that's a private uh placement, uh, that's in district, probably driven by it a hundred times, the old Bay Road School, um, so programs like that. So overall with those additional FTEs, um, and salary increases for roughly a hundred staff members, we're look, that's where you see the instructional salaries going up, six point eight seven percent. Uh, non-instructional salaries, um, just almost flat. All other line items, uh, pretty much flat here, you see on the BOSI services and our tuition. Um, has stayed stable as well in those private placements. So overall, the special education budget up three point five seven percent over last year. Next up, technology budget. This was a uh area of the budget where we did get a lot of thought exchanges. Um, go right to that around technology, technology upgrades, uh, the tools necessary. Um, you know, keep students, you know, on the cutting edge to prepare for whatever comes next. And so on the technology budget, uh, you see, we do have some retirements from the technology group. Um, we've not realized all those savings, we've kept them to reinvest in some professional development and trainings. Uh, you'll see on the BOSIs line, you know, our network costs and fiber uh continue to push the budget higher, every district is seeing this. Um, as we try to put more and more devices, technology is becoming more and more prevalent. Um, upgrading our network, and we always do that through BOSIs, so you see um some increase there. And then the state aid equipment and software lines are unchanged, um, that's a dollar for dollar expenditure to aid um in the budget. Uh, one, I wanted to take a minute and go over our technology lease and why we do it. Um, so we did this many, many years ago. Um, can everybody see this or do I need to make, I can make everything a little bit bigger?
I can see it.
Go on to twenty-four, well. Maybe that's a little too big. So this is really showing a, a six-year cycle. Um, when we first started on the one-to-one journey, um, the district was spending probably over, you know, a million and a half dollars every spring on technology purchases. So everybody would put in their requests, so maybe Plank South would get iPads. Um, Plank North could get something entirely different. And, you know, the high schools could get something different and we can, uh, we had, um, I want to say forty-seven different printers brands within the district alone. Um, so anybody can remember when you fired up your laptop? It took probably fifteen minutes because it had a map to all those different print drivers. So we had technology all over the place, um, with no real rival reason. And we're spending a significant amount of money, so one of the things we did was go on this lease uh program. So tried to get about to where we were spending. But when you do a lease, you get all the equipment upfront and it's spread out over three years. Um, so year one, you could get, you know, with a one point two million dollar payment, you're really getting three point six million worth of equipment right up front. So that's why we could do every single device at one time. So then, that one point two million gets us about seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars and eight. So in lease two, you know, what can we do? So about two million dollars in a new three year. So we have one year, but and then what does that get us? About four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And then if you notice in year four, we are actually spending less with the aid than we were originally doing. So that's the whole concept behind our three-year technol- technological lease program. I just wanted to refresh it because we just, you know, you know, back in January, approved that purchase agreement, so I thought this would be a good time as part of the budget to, you know, kind of refresh everybody's memories of where this comes from. You know, I've thrown some additional like, okay, what if the price goes up? Um, what does that do? And just to kind of show you, that fourth year is really where we come down and the aid is making us as as we have all three leases going simultaneously, we are now uh netting uh a less of a cost than we were uh before we started this program. So I just wanted to point that out for everybody, it's linked right to the presentation. I mean, you can interchange the numbers, however you want to make it, it's pretty standard, universal. Um, uh, as a way of describing how our process works when it comes to the technology leases. I think there's a chat box question. Do we provide Wi-Fi assistance to students under the technology budget? I believe we still are part of the program, we have some of them out. Um, but now that we're back full-time in person, that hasn't come up much this year. Um, when we were hybrid, that was something that was mandated, but right now with, um, there not being a, an, an online option per se uh for students, it, it really hasn't come up. We do have a map, we are, actually the kids in the WTI program went around Webster um and created a Wi-Fi hotspot map. Uh, that is uh ex- accessible for all, for every kid.
Oh, so that was not assist, so Wi-Fi assistance was not something that we provided before it, um, COVID? And, um, man, I'm surprised, just because they have their devices at home, but I know not everybody has access to.
So when we did the Wi-Fi, this is, this is probably where it, it gets the most surprising that actually the most outages for Wi-Fi were around Lake Road. Both, because why?
Because above ground.
Yep, that Wi-Fi and internet access is pretty much standard in most, in all the housing complexes and all the main population centers uh in Webster. So you're, you're, you know, you're thinking where people would struggle to find internet access, it becomes standard as part of, um, you know, rental agreements now. Um, so actually most of the outages for neighborhoods and things were and where it was spotty and couldn't be accessed were uh in kind of the far out areas.
And so when we had the, when we had, uh, we were doing remote, did you have a lot of need from students then? Who were looking for assistance with access?
Um, I think our numbers were, we handed out maybe sixty hotspots.
Sixty?
I'd have to go back and double check. But it wasn't as many when we put it out who needed them, it was not as many as um we, we predicted.
Yeah, my recollection is that it's actually was lower than that. And that actually is for both students and staff that needed it when we had the, during the pandemic anyways. Um, I think we were equipped to do that, Brian, I think, but I actually.
Yeah.
We can, we'll get you that answer, the official answer, but my recollection was somewhere in the twenty, twenties or thirty range.
Yeah, just because if there's a, you know, I don't know, it might be something we just want to think about. It's because it's not only just access, but whether they have it or not, you know, you have to pay for it. It comes in some of the other, it comes as part of the agreements, which is great. And then there's the other issue though, so if there was, you know, thirty, say thirty students that were struggling, don't have any Wi-Fi access, you know, is there a program or something that we can assist with?
Yeah, Spectrum did a lot of that for us because they had a lot of programs as well.
They did.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's a big initiative, obviously with New York State still.
Exactly.
Even at the federal level, they've just allocated more funds there, so, um. Yeah.
Yeah, most of it was people, you know, parents working from home and now you know, two, three kids were taking up all the bandwidth as well when they were trying to get on, on school. So we, we got more about assisting, I think, there if I remember correctly. Um, and getting requests for help with that, um, because, you know, parents working from home, you know, they're getting kicked off.
Yes, I did have to, I had to threaten my son a couple of times. I was like, nobody games during this time. Nobody waves.
Yep, do not stream anything right now, that's a very important call.
Exactly.
So, real briefly, Mike Alt got bumped off. And so I'm reaching out to Paul, I don't know if he can see this email. And it says the meeting host will let him in.
I just, I just let him in, yep, he should be coming in any second, yep.
Okay, okay. So ironic, talking about access. Thank you, Paul.
I think a lot of people learned their routers from fifty, you know, needed to be upgraded.
Yeah, other people found it, every.
Downloaded that Spectrum app that tested your network for you to see how fast it was going. So when we look at the numbers then for our technology budget, just a two point three five percent increase, you see BOSIs being the largest uh chunk increase really, um, with all of our software, all of our network going through BOSIs um in support there, um, we, we saw that as being the largest increase. Um, as part of the year-to-year overview. Any other questions on uh technology?
So Brian, I know we had a lot of different technology applications used throughout COVID. Is there, are there things that were savings or are there things that will continue? Or are teachers and staff still kind of evaluating that and looking at that?
Um, I've I, I could say I haven't seen any savings on the software evaluating side. Um, but Aaron, I'll defer to you. Um, is what is being utilized more on the instructional end. Um, you know, I know NearPod, we, we've, we've kept that, that was a, um, you know, a hybrid remote product, we've, we've kept that on because we saw uh the, the long-lasting benefits of it, but I, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. Um, you know, when Joe Montemiro and I met, uh, we haven't discussed anything coming off the plate of options, so.
But I do know that the summer is a great time for that. I'll just jump in, Tam, and just say that the plan is to obviously be looking at, because we've bought the software for this year in a lot of those cases, right? So it's a year-to-year basis. So I do know that Joe does a great job of uh reaching out to, to our staff to say, is this something we want to continue with? And if the answer is yes, and primarily it usually is. But there are some things that we've looked at the usage of it as well, and when the usage number is low, we try to go directly to those, maybe it's only one or two or three teachers that are potentially still using something that, that, and we have the conversation with them, and our directors get involved in that as well.
Okay.
Yep. Question.
Thank you. Yeah, just the impact of COVID to, to that as well, because technology was everything. So thank you for that.
Yep.
Uh, next up, fun topic is our library budget. And where we're going with that. So we had, we did get some thought exchange about the library, about updating library books. Um, really, it was wrapped up into the arts, um, when you put, to do the keyword search around library was more funding for music and library. Um, you know, and uh supporting the special areas. And so, um, you know, our database and software products for library, uh, the, you'll notice the budget hasn't increased as much in years past. Um, when we do our databases through uh BOSIs. Uh, some changes to library supply, uh, equipment lines is determined by principals. Like I said, they always have the discretion to adjust funding with budget transfers throughout the year. Um, so if a principal doesn't spend all their supply money, they might, you know, go talk to their librarian about adding some additional library books or something above and beyond, it will do a, a budget transfer for them, and they can uh do that. Um, that, we allow that discretion for building. But as a whole, uh, the district spends about three times the amount of aid received from the state for library books and materials. So, um, we do a healthy support of our libraries, uh, beyond uh what the state formula sets. So um, we do a healthy support of our libraries uh beyond uh what the state formula says. And then just see some salary increases where we look at the numbers. So supplies and materials down slightly, that's pretty much enrollment. Uh, five thousand dollar increase on the B O C's database uh and search engines. And then the salaries, uh, five point one percent. Um, that's a little bit higher than the contractual rates, uh, but there are some TA support. Um, we do have part-time TA support. Their rates are moving faster than uh the typical uh instructional salaries. Um, based on that minimum wage, plus a few extra funds uh thrown in here uh to assist. Because we were um thinking a few more libraries this summer uh would be. On the docket for moving around and perhaps some extra hours need to be set there as well. Uh, so any questions on the library overall?
Brian, can you go to the, to the slide right before, um, or actually the, the, the thought exchange? It looked like parents were looking for updated. Um, library collections to reflect current diverse authors, um. When you, is there, the foundation aid we know, right, is, is like a, it's coming in and we talk about that cliff. This might be a good place to, to purchase books, like do that, you know, investment of purchasing library books. Is that in that budget there that?
Yeah, so if.
If I couldn't figure out if it was supplies or materials.
So, yeah, so if you add supplies, it's pretty much. This, for some reason, this is like the antiquated state system. Our budget codes align to how we report to the state and they segregate it. It goes back to, is it a book or periodical type of thing? Um, and so we've never really, you know, it's one of those things that's never been updated, so we. With the state, we gotta do, here's a supply, here's a material, but in essence. This is a hundred, this is all books. If you wanted to spend every dime of it on books, you can, um, so. Every building does a little bit something different.
Okay.
I will say about, was it three years ago? The library. Um, supplies and materials budget was built within the building budgets. Now we've brought it out and added it to the building budget. So before they would have to budget within their allocation, now they get their allocation plus a library allocation. So it's increased the building's level of support overall. And like I said, that flexibility is always there. So when Erin was at Clem South. And, you know, she was talking to her librarian and she wanted to uh do something above and beyond. Erin's budget could always go and support that, you know, whether it's um. Her supplies or her textbook money, she wanted to, she could have done, she could do that. And we do see that. Um, amongst most of the buildings uh with some additional funding as the year progresses.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, next up are pupil services budget. And so um, there's a lot of different items that go into this budget area. Um, you know, it was a very popular um thought exchange. Um, and I kind of teased out, it probably take like, there was a lot of mental health. Components, but pupil services is so much more than mental health. And uh, I picked, I was able to pick out two of the best. Um, in the search for the academic preparation. And Shannon, you mentioned this a little bit about getting ready for college in those different pathways. We saw this a lot. Um, about not every kid needing to attend a four-year college. What can we do to help support them? Um, and so. You know, one of the huge components of this budget is the occupational education program. And that's the E M C C, the foreman programs that we do for B O C's, uh, summer school programs. And then the typical mental health guidance and nursing and uh psych and social work. But uh, really to get at um, some of those things that parents were looking for and community members were looking for. Um, is putting additional seats for the B O C's programs. Uh, we are the largest uh east side district. Um, so the way the foreman center works, uh, you get certain amount of slots based on the size of your district. And um, we historically have always filled those. Uh, the one program that is different is the new visions medical. I'm sure many of you have heard it. It is. You know, I think, is it Brian, the most popular program perhaps that they offer? Um, it's the most competitive.
It's also the most, yeah, it's the most competitive. Yep.
Yeah, um, so we could vary, like some years we could have between the two high schools, three students get in. Because it is like a blind admissions process. In some years, we've had as high as twenty students, ten at each school get it. Um, and it's really all over the place. It's a tough, you know, we've never said, okay, you've locked, you've, when it comes to new visions. Building has, you know, you've already been capped at how many slots you have. Well, we got six extra kids into new visions this year. You know, we've always honored those because that program is so competitive and moved money from different areas of the budget to cover that. But um, what we're talking about here is adding slots for all the other programs. Um, uh, that the high schools have wanted, uh, Thomas's and Traders, both requests are up. Um, in, in this area, um, but we gotta look at it. It's a double edged sword. Because whatever number we put down, so say, you know, we want to send eighty kids from each building. You know, a hundred and sixty plus ten from goal, so there's a hundred and seventy. We're paying for a hundred and seventy no matter what, even if only a hundred and sixty go. And at almost twelve thousand dollars a pop, you know, that would add up with a lot of wasted uh seats. So we kind of, you know, under, I'll say, under budget or underestimate our slots. And then if we get more open to us and we have the right fit. Because it is always about the right fit, because maybe there's ten kids of ours that want to get into welding, but they only have ten slots. East side wide, so we know those kids aren't all going to be able to get in there. So it's kind of this balancing act of how do you uh best utilize that? Um, but it's, they're great programs. I, I just got a tour uh a couple of months ago, some of the new facilities. Uh, I really put in a plug that they do uh a tour for our board event again. Um, but my hope is before I retire, they expand their pathways, um, especially on the healthcare side. Um, you know, I'd love to look at that, um. You know, for OT PT programs, other things like that. Um, I know they've taken off with the E M, E M T program, so, you know, a lot of opportunity there. I also happen to sit on the C T E committee uh for the east side, so it's kind of a little passion project of mine. Um, these programs, so.
And, and just so that, I'll reiterate, Brian already said it, but this, this year's requests for those programs is the highest it's ever been.
Yeah, that's great. I really, really want to provide the student, you know, the kids in our community as many opportunities as we can. We, I, you know, so that they, they have these opportunities and I'm. That's what I always continue to be so impressed in with when we do our tours and, and talk to everyone is how much opportunity is really there for kids. So I, I love having these additional options there, um. Especially, you know, for a public school system too, to have so much, so much opportunity there. Thank you.
Yeah, if they started a ceramic tile program, teaching kids how to do that, I'm like, I'd hire them tomorrow. And we got one guy working on tile in the district right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there, there's, there's nobody on the commercial side that does big jobs anymore. Uh, you know, set themselves up for a nice little career with no debt. Um, so just as a reminder, the mental health, we've added seventeen point oh F T E in the last two budget cycles. We, we think we've addressed those. Um, we're gonna uh work through that. And really better spent our funding in that we've gotten this year. You know, some of those other academic areas. So just want to, you know, we've, we've touched on that. We're not. Even though it came up in the thought exchange, we haven't ignored it. We just, uh, we think we're at the point where we adequately addressed it right now. And wanted to put some resources in other areas. The other thing too is nurses, um, the last two years, our nurses have done an amazing job. Uh, with daily changes, here's another change, here's another change, what's this test, we gotta test this, test that, don't test. Uh, you know, it's been, you know, crazy. Um, so as part of our commitment to them, we looked, did a little county survey of what staffing looks like. And other um, local districts around nursing and, and are we, um. You know, are we falling down there? Do we not have enough? So one of the things we looked at is like, yep, you know what? We could look to upgrade and add uh four point oh. And to get us to be comparable to other suburban uh east side districts. Uh, so this is one of those ones partially funded through stimulus. We're, we're working our way through. Um, because we can, it is allowable as part of the stimulus package. So added money here, you'll see that um, on the non-instructional side for these nurses. Um, and then roll that in and roll that out, make that permanent. So when we look at the numbers, first off.
Hey Brian, can I just stop for one quick second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, are there going to be enough nurses available to take those jobs? In terms of working in schools?
You know, we, we've been able to fill them.
Okay.
Um, I, it is a unique nursing position. I think.
Right.
Um, the hospital systems have done a uh great job for us of. Driving people crazy and drive them into looking for other positions. Uh, I might know somebody in my family that. Was, was in that boat. They didn't take a job at the school, but you know.
There's not a shortage of nurses per se.
There isn't. I think our, our rules were different. Like they didn't have to conform to a lot of those hospital mandates. Uh, and it's also a unique, you know, it is a ten month position. You get to be home. Uh, you know, on breaks, so perhaps it, it lends well to somebody that, you know, has those, her kids still in school. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a slightly um, different nursing style. Uh, if you want the fast pace of the emergency room. I don't, I don't know if, you know, the, you know, maybe sometimes the elementary uh nurse's office feels like that. Somebody falls off the monkey bars, but um, yeah, I know, I think we've done all right on the. Picking up and, and filling those positions.
Thank you.
Um, so I mean, you know, we've added the mental health, wire instructional salaries down. Um, we, we did have some retirements there, um, and with no new ads, uh, retirements have offset those salary increases. The non-instructional salaries you see there are the nurses being added to the budget. Why, that's why that percentage is a little higher um than you would typically see. All other line items are flat. B O C's is where the extra slots are. So you see that uh, that increase on the B O C service line is a hundred percent extra slots. For the two high, for the high school programs uh to, to be able to send more kids there. So, next up is our athletics and co-curricular budget. Um, and really, it's more than just athletics. And when you think athletics and co-curricular, often athletics overshadows, but it's really more than just, you know, the after-school athletics. Um, a lot of this also includes, um, their budget includes P E support programs. So many of our P E classes go bowling, skating, swimming, um, you know, orienteering. So there's P E wrapped up in here. All our club advisors. Uh, positions are wrapped up as part of this budget as well. Um, so it's not just, you, you know, your traditional athletic programs. Because we did see some, you know, that, that come out core instruction, um. You know, I, I balanced the budget with equitable funding for athletics and arts, make students well-rounded, um. I did put this on here because the core that it seems like that we don't want to fund athletics. But really, one of the main things is this athletics and co-curricular is, it looks like it's a large part of the budget. Because a lot of our athletic programs are out there at the front center. Our athletic directors do a nice job with social media. Um, and we, the school community takes a lot of pride in the athletics programs. But it's really a very small part of the overall budget. Um, athletics and co-curriculars is only one point six four percent of our ongoing operating budget. So I wanted to just make sure I touched on that, that, um. Athletics isn't uh, and curriculars aren't really breaking our monetary bank when it comes to the budget. It's a very, very small part of the overall budget. And it's not just um, the after-school stuff. It is also P E and those clubs and advisors. Uh, I want to point out when we do look at the numbers, this is one area where we're having difficulty increasing uh pricing. On a couple fronts. One is contracts with facilities outside our control for events. Uh, you know, for skating, we have to pay rent costs. They've escalated their costs. Because these groups have been most impacted by the pandemic. Bowling alley was shut down, skating rooms were shutting, shut down, so. They've raised their prices and if we want to continue providing those opportunities for our students. Um, you know, those facility costs uh have gone up for us to send people. We are seeing some supply chain price increases on, on athletic items. And uh, this was an opportunity to look at. Uh, getting rid of the old system of uniform purchasing. Uh, where, you know, the uh seventh and eighth grader wore the badly misshapen hand-me-downs from the J V program. Or the senior program that doesn't fit. Um, we wanted to make a commitment uh to the kids. Um, and the programs to be able to find, to get right-sized uniforms. Uh, for the students, um, that actually uh fit and, and worked. And uh, so we have a three-year cycle of replacement now. If I got a check in the box. Uh, salaries for coaches and assisting coaches, yep, are included in this one, Mike. Yep. All those salaries are included in this. Um, so overall, the salaries are up about three point six three percent uh year to year. You know, in, the athletic directors did put in requests for some increased equipment, increased supplies. Um, they look like large percentages, but overall they're uh small amounts to the budget. Um, B O C's, one of the more popular things that has come out of the pandemic is the ability for us to stream. Our athletic events. So you see that twenty twenty, twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two, that was the increase. Um, to uh go with that system to increase that, um, so that, um. You know, obviously as a software system and some equipment, seeing that going up five percent year over year. And then the contractual, that is a huge increase because you're seeing that from uh. You know, our rental, anything we're going to, we've seen a, a huge increase in the pricing that we're being charged and have to pay. That also includes uh what we pay officials for events, uh, they're uh seeing an increase in. What we're being charged for that as well. Questions on that part of the budget? All right, last up is the community education budget uh for next year. So we got a couple thought exchanges, not too much. Um, you know, I like this one, what I found when I popped in community ad into the search, see what would come up. You know, getting kids more involved, I thought was a great theme because that's kind of where we're looking for uh community education. What can we do um to respond to the needs of the community? And then, you know, just some maintenance updates to Aquatic Center uh from a parent as well. So what's in this budget? Um, there, you're going to see some higher salary increases. We've reorganized some of the support staff over there. Uh, one of the things is we've added a nighttime uh security guard uh at, for events. Um, so that's a shift over, that's a whole person coming into this budget that wasn't there last year. Um. One of the things we're doing is increasing the rate for seasonal staff uh to try to keep up with the market demand. How do we keep our college kids coming back to us and not going to Taco Bell? So doing some, you know, longevity increases for them every year if they come back to us. Um, and doing, we've had some extremely large events. Um, we have. For a while, we were the only pool in town and so a lot of people from uh outside of the community. Were coming and using it and I think word got out, we got a great little thing going here in Webster when it comes to aquatics. And so uh, we've had a lot of requests for large events. Uh, our two aquatics directors, Ben and Brian, love uh doing it. They do a lot of it in concert with the Webster Swim Association. Um, but try and, you know, staffing's an issue, doing some special rates uh to get. Uh, don't pick up that shift at Wegmans on Friday and Saturday. Hey, come still be a lifeguard for us, trying to do some special things. Hey, come still be a lifeguard for us, trying to do some special things for the kids over there. And, you know, trying to reinvigorate the programs offered that were more than just aquatics and what can we do and, you know, and offer to the community what they're looking for. I know we just sent out today some of the summer enrichment opportunities out to the community that we're offering as well. And then just to touch on the facilities upgrades, we do have an agreement with the Webster Swim Association. We give them a discount on facility run, usage rental fees for in-kind support. So if they do pretty well at a meet or something like that, they might buy some new equipment for the facility. So we're always trying to upgrade there. And then through the Capitol Project, we've done lighting upgrades. And we got a new sound system in HVAC, that scoreboard coming. Because that scoreboard is ready to bite the dust. You know, over 20 years old now. So it's, it's getting close to its end of its useful life. And when we look at the numbers, really, you see the salary change, big jolt of that coming over is a whole new person salary being in there for late-night security. And then the additional longevity stuff to, to get our part-timers keep coming back. So that looks a little skewed on the percent, but overall not a large numeric increase. It's comparative to the overall budget here. So with that said, if we look at what's the largest part, our instructional budget breakdown is obviously instruction, followed by special, special education, PPS items in our technology. So looking at that as a piece of pie, I'm a visual learner. So I like to see, you know, as long as instructions eat and everything else in this Pac-Man graph, we're doing the good thing. So workshop one, a slight updated number over the last time we met. There's a couple of changes there. And then this workshop, you add up all our instructional sections. We get a total budget of $195,813,457. What does that look like? It's a 3.7% increase over last year, about a $6,999,012 increase as well. So what's up with our next budget step? So internally, you know, we're looking at those enrollment in elementary court and course finalization for high schools. So maybe when we get to workshop three, we'll have some updated numbers because we'll have better data at that time. Workshop three, we're going to focus on finalizing the state aid and looking at the other revenue. Have better projections on sales tax and some of those items. On the to-do list for budget that you'll see pop up on the website, the admin disclosure is up there. It is online. You're waiting for SED to open the portal. Next couple of things we'll work through is after, in mid-April is the property tax report card or school report card and the property tax exemption report will all be online. These are all mandated by New York State to be up there. So that's on the to-do list. Then the important dates, we have workshop three on April 5th. Budget adoption is the 12th. On May 1st, all the budget materials will be published and online. May 3rd is the budget hearing, 17th is the annual vote. And just some final thoughts that I wanted to pull together. You know, looking at a multi-year budget approach, adding the federal stimulus positions into the budget, this is year one, gives us time for thoughtful approach to planning. And, you know, we're looking to buffer against possible future financial uncertainty in the coming years. It's kind of that old adage of you don't fix the roof when it's pouring, you fix it when it's sunny. And it's all about, you know, preparing for the future with that thoughtful approach to adding items into the budget. So with that said, any, any questions? I know that was a lot to go through. There was a lot of information. You know, happy to answer anything right now or if something pops up, you know, shoot me an email or a phone call, we can talk through it. Happy to do that as well.
So Brian, on your analogy of a rainy day, will we have an opportunity to bolster some of our reserves, which based on our position in the county or on the lower end for a school art size?
Yes, I'm very hopeful that we're, we'll close this fiscal year planning for a rainy day and that we will be able to finish the fiscal year in a, in a good position where we can address some of those needs we talked about in January. Which then could be used to offset, you know, New York State's very cyclical. It doesn't, you know, you know, the early, it was the 90s, then the early 2000s, and then 2010, 11. You know, usually it's a decade for good times and recovery, something else economically happens. So always trying to prepare for that next economic downturn.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. It's a very extensive overview. I appreciate everything.
Team member, I gotta thank my colleagues that are on the screen with us.
Oh, well, then we have to thank everybody. Yes, indeed. Thank you.
I agree. I think that everybody on the screen has given a great deal of input to this and has been a part of this discussion, which I really do appreciate, and I know our whole team does.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Oh, sorry. Do you see some of these, some of the BOSI's programs or where there may be programs in the community that might help with some of the projected shortages that we are experiencing for like teachers, teacher aides, bus drivers? How are we looking? Not that it would be part of the budget, but maybe down the road, it is part of what we offer that kids stay in the district or come back or come back as, as substitutes like a lot of colleges did. College kids did this over this break. You know, just small things like that, anything that we can do to either promote or support or, you know, try to help solve challenges in our own community.
Dave, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I can jump in there, yeah. Tammy, we actually, funny you said that, we, we did send out actually an email to our entire staff to see if any of their college kids coming home would be willing to during their downtime between, between semesters or when they were on a break, that they would come in and sub for us. And that did yield several people, including my daughter, which was nice. So it was a, it was a quick way to get maybe some other people in the pipeline that wouldn't normally, we didn't think about in the past. We certainly have looked at recruiting differently and in different locations. And actually, members of my team tomorrow are going down to Rochester Works to try to recruit some, some folks for some of those positions that you mentioned. And we're trying to be as active as we can. We, we have a, another agreement with Rochester First that we're trying to expand a three-month agreement with them to really highlight some of those positions and encourage more and more people to apply. The challenge is you gotta, you've got to look at it from a variety of sources because not everybody's looking in the newspaper, but some people are. There's, there's a variety of ways. So you kind of have to have a multi-pronged approach and, and you have to be persistent. Sometimes it's the time of year. So right now, we're focusing a lot on that certificated group of your teachers and, and, and then you kind of shift once those teaching jobs are taken, those that don't get hired. As Brian said, a lot of times it's easier to find a certified teacher to perhaps fill in as a teaching assistant or an aide because they're, you know, maybe they're brand new and they, they haven't been able to get hired. But we'd be willing to start their career within a district. And, and that's certainly the, the hope we're trying to connect with. And we obviously do the traditional things of teacher recruitment days and things like that. Those are all coming up. We were at Nazareth College last week. So trying to, you know, hit, hit a lot of different areas to try to recruit.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Tammy, just a side note as well, is there is a, a BOSI's program about education. So kids can opt to do that as part of the MCC. However, we're also starting a program using our UPK and working a couple of different ways. One is a volunteer. So if you're a high school student, there's an opportunity for you to volunteer in our UPK classrooms that are at Schrader. And then we're also adding, hopefully next year, a course that kids can take that also earns them credit to be part of that classroom and to, to grow their skills working as a teacher assistant almost. So we're looking at a lot of different ways to sort of keep our kids close and also give them skills that might help us in the future.
That's awesome. The program is going to develop all these stories already, right?
Yeah, we're always looking to pluck GeoTech students over into B and G. And I know we've hired a couple of our EMCC students at the Bus Garage to be mechanics, a couple Webster grads that went through there and now are mechanics for us.
Sounds great.
Right, one last comment. I really like how you link the thought exchange points to the financial plan. That was excellent. To show community feedback does matter to us.
Yeah. And that you use it. Yeah, there was a lot of feedback you hear sometimes that the, that, that thought exchange isn't working. And, and so I appreciate that too, that you tied feedback directly into the budget. I thought was great. Thank you.
Okay, any final comments?
I'll pop this up on the website tomorrow for everybody as well. From there. And I know on the state side today, they just kind of released their one-house budget. So I was going to do a, get to a kind of a summary for you guys too as well on that. I know NISCIS and NISBA sent out some stuff, but we'll get that for next time as well.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, with that then, can we have a motion to adjourn the workshop? Janice, hands right, and Mike's.
Was that quick?
All in favor. Yeah, it's, it's a long time to sit in a chair, right? Okay, thank you everybody so much and enjoy the rest of your evening.